Steve Bowers welcoming you to E plus TV six and an education forum featuring the candidates for Board of Education District two. This has been put together by the Chamber here in Jackson. We appreciate their involvement and the participation of these candidates. We're talking about two candidates in District two, Kevin Alexander and O'Neal Henley. Kevin Alexander is the incumbent. And I want to begin, gentlemen, if you will, Kevin, when people ask you about District two, and sometimes it's confusing, how do you describe District two?
Well, it is a big district. It encompasses all of three way. It runs from three way all the way through Spring Creek to the Henderson County line, to the Madison County Henderson County line. It encompasses Brown's Church and then Northeast.
Okay. What schools are inside that district, Kevin?
Nova, pre K, and then East Elementary.
East Elementary, okay. O'Neal, when people ask you about this district, how do you describe it?
Well, I just try to tell them where the voting booth places are. Of course, Kevin's already covered that, but it is a wide district from three way all the way to Browns going north to south. And in Highway seventy, almost right at the edge of city limits and then down on Medina Road. So it's a large district.
Okay. All right. Want to get into why y'all running. O'Neal, this is one race that has gotten publicity and it got publicity because of Facebook posting that came off your Facebook page and it led to an NAACP press conference. Anything you want to say about that?
Oh, well, basically, I, you know, I did that post not thinking of it anything racial. I did it because I thought it was political and I am a political conservative and that was my intent, certainly not anything that would would be a racial issue.
Kevin, anything you want to say about that?
Every time I'm asked this question, I always say it's Mr. Henley's right to post anything he wants to and that NAACP is right to call out things they want to call out. That's all I have to say about that.
Let's get on the this, this, this board race. Kevin, why are you seeking reelection and what do you think is key in this, in this race this year?
For the most part unfinished business. I ran four years ago because the school board made the decision to close five schools. It overcrowded a lot of school. You know, I've heard people say that Vision 2020 stopped the day Dr. Jones took his superintendent seat as our superintendent, but it didn't. We're still dealing with overcrowding. We're still dealing with all the causes that have come about because of Vision 2020. We still deal with it to this day. It's the reason that the discipline is even worse than it once was in our district. It's the reason it's harder to keep teachers in our district because we just overcrowded schools and, and you know, until we deal with that and make our classrooms smaller so that teachers can teach and students can learn in a way that's just better for everybody involved, we're still, we're still dealing with Vision 2020. And, and that's why I still believe it's important for me to run and continue to stand for what I stood for from when I ran the first time.
Okay. I want to come back to that because you've raised some very, very important issues and get further clarification. O'Neal, when, when, when you're asked why you're running, why are you running?
Well, basically I had a lot of people who asked me to run, a lot of teachers that had concerns and, you know, I know what it takes to have a good school. I was, I've been all the way through this. I began as a teacher and coach. I was principal at Northside High School. I was principal at JCM Assistant Superintendent and I walked several miles in those shoes at each one of those positions. And back not, not too long ago, we had some of the best schools in Tennessee, right here in Madison County. And I just want to see us get back to that. I don't know if we've gotten sidetracked with buildings or what the problem is. I know one of the problems we have Kevin touched on and, and that's discipline. We need to have a discipline in the school so that teachers can teach and, and the students can learn. If, if a teacher is interrupted, it doesn't take that teacher long to get back on task, but it takes those students a long time to get it back. And, and we need to address that issue and that's one of the main things that, that I would like to see addressed.
I want to get back to where Kevin was, was talking about Vision 2020. Has he done anything specifically to upset you or to get you into this race?
Oh, no. Kevin's a fine young man. Anybody that asks me, you know, I'll tell them he is. It's not him. It's just I, I had so many people that were asking me to run and also I spent 34 years of my life in this system and it saddens me to see it, you know, not making progress. And I would just like to see us gain some respect in a state and, you know, we're, we're below 50% of the rest of the state and we, we just got to bring our education system up. And that's the only reason I'm in it because I want to do what I can to help.
Okay. Kevin, I want to get Kevin Alexander and O'Neal Henley are running for school board District two and Kevin is the, is the incumbent. Kevin, when you talk about Vision 2020 and you feel like it has created this mess, where do we go then from here?
Oh, well, to touch on something O'Neal said about where do we go from here? I think our classroom size and, and how our schools are overcrowded is one of the biggest aspects we've got to work on. You know, I was a proponent of a later start time. I thought that would help with our older students getting into school a little bit later because they tend to go to bed later. I thought that would help them a lot in the discipline area and just feeling better when they get to school, not tired and, and we wouldn't lose that classroom time, the first couple hours it takes them to, to wake up. Dr. King and Dr. Catlett and Dr. Williams, you know, they know what they're doing. They're going to be great at running this school system and I think they're going to have a lot of great ideas to turn this school system around. And I think that's the most important thing that we have to do is turn the system around. It's, you know, we can build buildings. I mean, that's one thing. I mean, it looks good. We can redo buildings, which we need to do and we need to build buildings when we have the opportunity, when we can afford to do it. But we need to deal with the classroom, which is what I've been about the whole time I've been on the board. We spend over, we are in the top ten of expenditures per student in the state. We are in the bottom five percent in the state. You can go to Tennessee.gov and look at that. We have, in the last eight years, we drastically went down and, and in the state rankings. And we're finally in the bottom five percent. And I think Vision 2020 just put us over, over the top when it clouded the school, when it crowded the schools and overcrowded some schools. But I think the main thing we got to do is get our classroom size smaller for the benefit of teachers, for the students, you know, a later start time for, for the older students, middle school and up would be great. I think that would just help with the way they fill in the mornings. So there's a lot of things we can do, but I'm just waiting to hear, you know, we got to get past this coronavirus thing and then I'm, I can't wait to hear what Dr. King and Dr. Catlett and Dr. Williams think about where we go from here.
Have you got any ideas on how we address that overcrowding? I mean, the, because the buildings we talked about are JCM, New JCM and New Madison and the possibility of a Pope. Does that address, I think that doesn't address all that you're, all you're seeing.
Well, I mean, the new Pope is crucial. You know, I get a rap that I've been against that school. I have not. Of course I did. And when we first voted on it in, in 2017, it was a five, four vote to build a new Pope, which I voted again. But I am for building it now because now we, we don't have a choice. Once Nova became a permanent pre K, there was no place to backflow the students in that caused the overcrowding at Thelma Barker and, and Pope. And, and so that's something we still have to deal with. So, so that, that's important, but I believe, you know, Liberty is actually, you know, as I was out going to houses, you know, the, the students that would be going to Liberty, you know, they're all going to Jackson Christian School. You see the signs all throughout the Brown's Church community where they have the Jackson Christian School sign because Liberty went from, I think the first year I was on the board after Vision 2020, it had 1,150 students in it, which is way too much. And now it's dropped back down to about 850 students because that, but that's because we've lost students because of Vision 2020. They went to other counties and went to private school.
Okay. O'Neal, what would you like to see then as far as addressing this? You raised the issue about classroom and discipline and everything else. Where do we go from here?
Well, you know, I agree with Kevin. We need smaller classrooms. We need smaller high school. I've, I've been principal at and manageable. I was principal at JCM when we had 1,800 and we had a lot of area to cover from the east campus to the west campus. And when you've got a school that large, you're going to have some, some problems. Fortunately, we had some really great teachers and really great assistants there and we were able to, the four years I was there, we had a, a great school and that was, instead of putting a lot of money into buildings, now obviously we need a building because it's getting old and it's not safe, we need it, but we need to be putting money into our teachers. I think Kevin addressed something there. We're losing students to the surrounding counties. We're losing students to private school and not only are we losing students, we're losing good teachers. Back several years ago, you had to put dynamite under a teacher to get them, to get out of the system. They wanted to go as long as they could, but now what I hear from teachers is, you know, as soon as I have my time in, I'm getting out. And we're losing those teachers. Some are going to surrounding counties, some are teaching in college now, but they're retiring while they've still got some very productive years ahead of them. And what I'd like to see, and, and this goes along with what I was talking about with this, it's not just the teachers, the money the teachers pay. Teachers, for the most part, love what they do and we've got to give them the resources to do the job that they can do. I think the discipline, if we address that, it will solve a lot of problems. If, if you have disruptive students in your, in your classroom, it's not a pleasant chore to teach and we need to...
What do we do about that then? I, you know, and I'm not going to get Kevin in all this conversation. I mean, I hear you both saying similar things, you know, given the fact of our society, given the fact of our structure, where we are with buildings and everything else in the, in the space we have right now, what are we going to do about this?
Well, one thing, I think we need to get creative with in-school suspensions. There's a lot of things that can be done and I understand that a lot of this is, is caused by state mandates. And what we need to do is talk to our representative and our senator here. And if there's problems coming from the state that's causing those problems locally, we need to address those and, and go right straight to the state with it and try to get them a chance.
Kevin, I want to get you in on this. Do you, do you share that frustration on part of faculty members and whatever, as far as what we need to do about the classroom?
Absolutely I do. And I fought for teacher raises, you know, every time we've had a chance, I fought for them. I think they should be paid as much as we can possibly pay them and make the environment as great as we possibly can for them to teach. I know one of the biggest things that I've heard over the last couple of years is when teachers have a problem with a student, they send them to the office and the office sends them right back. And I understand that, you know, you know, Dr. Jones made it clear that he felt like the teachers needed to learn how to de-escalate the issues in the classroom with students. Well, some students, you know, that's what they want is to cause issues and, and, and I know my son, you know, you know, I've had to meet with his teachers before and everything and just because, you know, he just gets rambunctious sometime and kids do that. And the majority of them, when the teacher gets on to them, they will, they will begin to, to, to straighten up and everything, but we just need to support our teachers. We need to support our administrators so that they can take correct action so students will feel like, hey, there's a consequence to when I act up. And I think that's the most important thing. You know, I went and checked my son out of school after they, you know, they removed the corporal punishment. I went and I drove down to school one day, checked my kid out, drove down to the fire department, whooped his rear end and took him back. And, and, and we need parents to get engaged like that. But the whole thing is when students are at schools, they need to know that if that teacher gets on to them and they don't listen to that teacher, they're going to have to deal with consequences from the administrators and they're going to deal with that student and there's going to be a consequence that they're, that's going to cause them not to want to act that way anymore.
Would that consequence include removing them from that school?
I, I don't...
Or somewhere else?
Like I think, O'Neal, like Coach Henley said, I think there's, there's some deals with the state that mandates some things that, you know, it counts against you if you remove a kid from school and the state looks at that as a, as a negative. So we, we've got to figure out a way to, to deal with the stuff that we've got to deal with and, and, you know, you know, like I say, I look forward to hearing Dr. King and Dr. Catlett's and Dr. Williams' view on this, but I mean, there's a lot of stuff to overcome in this.
Wow. O'Neal, anything you want to add to that?
Oh, yeah. As far as the discipline part, not only did it help the teachers to teach, but once you have discipline in the classroom, you're going to see the results you're looking for in test scores and you're going to see the results you're, you're, you're looking for as far as the graduation rate. It all contributes. And also, parents want their children to be safe in school. And I, I think the biggest reason that people are leaving our, our system and going to surrounding counties and going into private school, they fear for the safety of their, their children. And if we can get the discipline back and, and they feel safe, I think they'll, they'll, a lot of them that left would come back. I know when he talking about Dr. Catlett, when Dr. Catlett was principal at Northside High School, we were making some great progress there. He had a lot of the students that had left and gone to private school were coming back and we were, we were making a lot of progress. And then, I don't know, it seemed like after he left, that kind of went back the other way. But if we, when these people move out of county, not only are they taking their student, they're taking their tax money. And if we're going to really support these schools and have the finances to, to take care of them and do what needs to be done, we need those people here with their tax money. Also, if you've got schools that have a reputation of having discipline, these companies that come and check out Jackson and, and the area for moving in, they will be more likely to come here if we've got a good reputation in our school. So this is one of the big things for me. We've, we've got to make our school appeal to everyone. And another thing that we need to do as far as this is, we, we need to have some continuity all the way through where students stay together. You know, several years ago, the way it was, a student went through elementary school together, junior high back then, and then in high school. And they developed a bond with each other. At Northside, we were like a family, you know? And not only did those students get along together a lot better and don't have the conflicts if they really know each other, but the parents who start out in elementary school, going to PTA and PTO and, and things like that, they're together and they get to know each other and they come on through middle school and high school or K through eight in high school, however, we, we decide we need to do this. And when you can keep people together all the way through, you develop that family atmosphere in the school.
Kevin, the way that we're doing things now, of course, we have open enrollment and trying to maximize choice. Are we trying to, to continue to do that or get that kind of continuity going through the system now?
I believe we are. I believe that's the whole purpose of having K eight and that each area is that continuity.
To give that continuity, yeah.
Yeah. And to give that continuity and which my, I mean, I, I enrolled my son and opened and enrolled him in the Rose Hill. That's where he attends because it's, you know, he can stay there, you know, you know, through sixth, eighth, sixth, eighth grade and he was at East, but, but yeah, I think that's important.
I worked in Henderson County decades ago and, and they maintained a K through eight system. The state of Tennessee pushed them hard to develop a junior high or middle school and they were resistant to it and, and maybe they were ahead of the curve because they, they do have some continuity and then you can go to Scottsdale or Delection High School. One of the thing, when we're talking about student performance, there was a real effort in, with Eric Jones and, and staff to provide continuity and curriculum across the board. So if you transfer, and we have a lot of, as you know, Kevin and O'Neal, we have a lot of inside the system movement, transfers. Was, was that, Kevin, is that on the right track? Do you want that to continue or are you looking for something else there as far as performance and getting these scores up?
Oh, that, that, absolutely. That's Dr. Jones and Dr. Myerkel and his team just did a lot of great things and the fact that they brought that continuity and instruction into our school system where if you leave one school, which we have a lot of, of leaving one school and going to another, you're not separated by, you know, weeks of studying, you know, that you're sort of in the same, in the same area. You know, I might not be in the same week or, you know, but you're close. So that's important, but you're teaching, but you're learning from the same textbooks and, and that's what's important. When one school is teaching one textbook and others teaching another and then you move, you're, you're, you're even worse off because you're, you don't have a clue of where you're at and...
I didn't realize that we had gone so many years without those consistent textbook adoptions. We may be back on that with budget constraints. I don't know, just want to watch out. And, O'Neal, do you feel like that, that there was progress being made or what do you see there?
Uh, I don't know that progress is being made in talking with several teachers. I think they, some of them feel like they're being forced to just teach from a script. You know, they're given this lesson plan to teach and, and they, they have to go right by it. And some have even told me that administrators observe them, that they get checked down if they get off of the script. Now, I don't think any teacher went to the school to, to become just a parent, you know? Teachers have a personality of their own.
How do you protect that individuality and yet maintain a consistency in, in instruction?
Well, you, you have a, I believe you have to have a textbook and you let that, that teacher make their own lesson plans and you have certain materials that you want to cover within those lesson plans, but you let them teach according to their teaching style and their, and their ability and, and their personality. When I was principal, I would go in and observe teachers. No two teachers taught alike. They, they had their own style and, and in doing so, they feel good about themselves. They feel good about what they're teaching.
Kevin, do you feel like we had lost that in this standardization effort out there?
Now, I'm happy about the same, the, the same textbooks in the classrooms throughout the district. I'm not happy about teachers being told how to teach. That's one of the first conversations I had with Dr. King was, hey, look, these teachers feel like they've got to teach from a script, that they have no leeway. And he made it clear to me, he understands that a teacher needs to be able to teach how they feel comfortable. Otherwise, we're doing the teacher and the students a disservice because they're not going to get anything out of it. If the teacher feels nervous and, and feels like they're stuck to a script, and I've heard a lot of teachers, you know, talk about the fact that a group of eight people walk in their classroom, watch them for about two minutes or three minutes and then tell them all the terrible things they've done, that just, that just doesn't work. And I talked to Dr. Catlett about that and, and that's not going to be the way things are done anymore.
Okay. We've been given, I've been given the sign that we've got five minutes left, so I want to give both of you a chance, adequate chance to wrap up. O'Neal, we'll start with you as to, once again, to just summarize why you're running, what you feel the key issues are in this campaign.
Well, Steve, I, I'm running just because people have asked me to. I've stayed out of education for several years and, and I've watched it deteriorate actually. And, and because I do care so much about the system and because I do care so much about the teachers and, and I just thought I would get into this thing, I would offer myself my experience that I've had over the years. I know how it feels to be an assistant superintendent and have board members try to micromanage what you're doing. And we've had that over the last few years and as a, I know my job as a board member. I'm to elect a superintendent and we're supposed to do school policy and, and that's it. Now, there is one thing more that I would do as a board member. Same thing I'd do as a deacon in the church. I would go to the superintendent and, and by the way, what I'm seeing of Dr. King and his staff, they're doing a great job so far and, and I, I hope that he will retire here. I hope he does that good a job. But back to what I was talking about, if there's a problem in the church as a deacon, I feel like it's my responsibility to go to the pastor and say, look, this is a potential problem and, and not let him get blindsided or something. I'd be the same way with the superintendent now. I wouldn't be going in telling him what to do, but I would go in and say, look, Dr. King, this problem is about to come up. You need to be prepared to handle it. And, and so that would be my reason for running. My reason for running is certainly nothing personal. I've enjoyed my retirement. I enjoy my grandchildren, but I certainly would offer myself and my experience if it would help the school system.
Okay. Appreciate very much, Kevin, you know, O'Neal, O'Neal Henley. Kevin Alexander, you, you know where we are and so concluding summary, whatever, why you're running or what you think is key in this, whatever you want to say.
Definitely unfinished business. I've had, I have a son that'll be going in the seventh grade at Rose Hill. I have a grandchild that's a year and a half, that's a year and a half old that will be going to school in a few years. I hope it's here in Madison County in a, in a school system that, that is strive, that is thriving and doing great under leadership, Dr. King, Dr. Catlett. As far as the board, we also set the vision. That's why my elected officials get together and we set the vision. We set the vision for the school system. Superintendent is to carry it out. We set policy and, and we hire superintendent and we, we, we set up a budget. That's what we do. But the board is the one that sets the vision. I, I never micromanaged Dr. Jones and I really don't know of any board members that did. They did tell him how they felt about things. I don't want to be involved in the building, in, in buildings. I want to be involved in, in supporting our superintendent, but setting a vision that helps our school system to thrive, that we can educate kids, that teachers can come to work and be happy and be in a safe environment and, and know that they've accomplished something at the end of the day. I think that's the most important, you know, I've, I've supported teachers throughout my four years. JMCEA has, you know, endorsed me because they know I've supported them. A lot of the strife that happened on the board was decisions that were made concerning teachers that I actually, you know, supported Dr. Jones in the way he laid it out, but then when the teacher started calling and the uproar began and, and saw some other things, we just didn't have all the information and we reversed force for our teachers, for our retirees when it came to insurance, for our teachers when it came to the two days off. You know, I'm a big supporter of teachers and I always will be and I want to do what's right for all our students and teachers. And I want to support Dr. King and Dr. Catlett and Dr. Williams to, to make this really go. I hope we'll have a cohesive board. One of the most important things that Dr. King said during his interviews was he was going to be a mediator with the board. He was going to bring us together, you know, and that's something we haven't had here now since I've been on the board and that's very important. And I'm one of the five board members that voted for Dr. King and I want to be able to stay on and support him.
Okay. Appreciate very much. I was getting the signal we need to wrap up. Thanks to, to both of you, Kevin Alexander, O'Neal Henley, they are the candidates for Board of Education District two. Best of luck, gentlemen. Appreciate this, appreciate the Chamber doing this, appreciate you being with us here at E plus TV six. E+ TVC.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.